The meeting will come to order. It is 7:04. This is the 16th regular meeting of the Board of Ed. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We have a lot to cover tonight, so we'll try to keep things moving along. Our first order of business for the evening is an update on the superintendent's search process. President McCormick and Karen Shaw will be the 2A. Please come to the microphone. Good evening, people.
Good evening, everyone. I trust you can hear me. Last time I was here, my wife said that I could not be heard. And for the hour, which is be tipsy, I caught holding you-know-what. She severely chastised me for not being heard. But thank you as always. It's a pleasure to be here. And we want to do three things. Give you a quick update of where we are. We want to take you through the leadership profile report, the results of our report to you on our findings, all of the focus group meetings, the online survey. And thirdly, we want to share with you our recommended desired characteristics report that will be used to vet recruiting and all of the candidates as we go through the process. So there are two things that I will ask from you. Is that to approve the desired characteristics report at the end as reported or within the modifications that you feel comfortable with. If we can get to that point, then I'm happy to count. The second part is we need to solidify one meeting. We don't have to do that this evening, but we want to solidify the slate presentation scheduled for the week of the 20th. We'd like to recommend that we meet on the 20th to present you the slated candidates. Because if you remember, the first interview is scheduled for March 25th. So earlier we could do it in a week, the more time we have to digest the slate. So it is my pleasure to report to you that we're on schedule. We told you some six weeks ago that we would be here this time, on this day, to present the leadership profile report. And that's what we intend to do this evening. Karen is going to take you through that leadership profile report. I'll take you through the desired characteristics. And then, of course, we will entertain any questions. Feel free to interrupt us if something doesn't make sense as we go through it. We've heard our staff give this thing a number of times over the last couple of weeks. So interruptions will not bother us, or should not bother us. There is a, just very quickly, the online survey was completed. We took it down Monday. As I said, initially, we would take it down the week before, on the 8th and 9th. And we let it run an extra four or five days. As a result, we almost doubled the number of participants. We had 101 last week, and we took it down, we have 198. And so that was well worth it to sort of stretch it out for those few days. And I appreciate Helen and the company sending a notice out in response for the community. We have finished all the interviews of the various groups, both internally and externally. I will tell you, the only ones they're going to brag about are the students. They did an outstanding job, and we certainly appreciate their participation. But Karen will take you through some of that. There is a, we've already started the advertising for the online piece. Just a very generic module that says, "Florida is a great place. Has a position open? Please apply." So a few more, it's a little more involved than that. But we will update that based on your approval of the desired characteristics report this evening. And all of those channels that require text will be driven from the document that we approved this evening. There is a, you should note that the application deadline is still April 10th. There is, as stated earlier, we present the slate somewhere on around March 20th. We will have a, an initial interview will start March 25th, and we'll drive to a conclusion somewhere around the 3rd of April. In those dates as published, at this point, I don't see any reason to change the dates. And someone will say, "Well, you only had 198 people listen on the survey." Some will, "We talked to another 84, I believe." Was it 84? Yes, 84. And let me just put that in some context around that. So before someone asks me, "Does Matty Low shift before?" I think it was outstanding for the size of just their group rate last year. And they had 266 people to do the focus. But the online was only 73. And they say, "Different emphasis, different time," where they prefer to have more people come speak to us directly than use the online survey. Syracuse, for instance, was 74 people that did the focus group meetings, and 751 online. Their focus and energy was on the online survey. So I think when you look at that, and I just picked those two randomly, given the size of the district, I think it's outstanding. 84, by the way, is right in the middle of what we're accustomed to in terms of talking to people directly. The 198 is, for this size, is an absolute numbers regardless of size. It's about the number range that we're looking at. So I think we have some great information, great input. And the community was well represented in that piece. At least everybody that wanted to had an opportunity to speak to us. And the community, I thought, was very supportive. Some challenged us a little bit, and we appreciate that. There is, we had some great discussions, I think, in the community meetings. Particularly in Person One. The staff and the community talked to us very candidly and openly. And those comments have been collected, we will review. And we have incorporated those in the desired characteristics. Will become the documented record that we certainly will use to grab the rest of the search. To that end, Karen now will take you through the leadership profile report. If you've not met Karen, you've missed the treat. But she will take you through the leadership profile report, and I'll come back and do the desired characteristics.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. We had such a great time meeting with the community here. We really had some really amazing conversations. So the leadership profile report is basically what we received. All of the information when we met with individuals and groups, either individual groups, focus group settings, the online survey. Basically, we compiled all of the information together from the surveys, interviews, and the focus group meetings. And really trying to gather input that helps the board in determining the primary characteristics desired in the next superintendent. So this is what we, in the LPR, this is the information that we will be sharing tonight. First, we'll go a little bit with the survey results. So let me just... So the survey results. I had told you about 198 people filed the survey, and that really was a great response rate. So basically, the survey goes over a couple of big groups. It's vision and values, teaching and learning, and community engagement, and management. Those are the different buckets that the questions are gathered in. So almost two-thirds of respondents, the largest stakeholder group, were parents of kids with the district, and that's pretty typical because that is the largest group. Parents with kids in the district represented about 63.6% of all respondents. Teachers made up the second most populous stakeholder group at 15.7%. The third largest group was the students, which is always great to hear, both in the focus groups and in the survey. So the top areas, the statements were perceived to be the district's strengths based on the survey, were the district's schools are safe, and this is an overall. Technology is integrated into the classroom, and facilities are well-maintained. The district employs effective teachers, administrators, and support staff in its schools. And teachers personalize instructional strategies to address individual learning needs. So those were the top statements as the strengths based on the survey results. The top-rated leadership profile characteristics that constituents want in the new superintendent are, first, foster a positive professional climate of mutual trust and respect among faculties, staff, and administrators. Second is provide transparent communication. Third, establish a culture of high expectations for all students and personnel. Next is recruit, employ, and retain effective personnel through the district and its schools. And the last one is to understand and be sensitive to the needs of the diverse student population. So those were the top-rated characteristics based on the survey results. Also, there is, let me scroll down. So there's a smash shot of how the breakdown was, both on the personal interviews or focus groups, and then the online survey. So you can see all, by category, who was involved in each of those. So as Ed said, the total was 84 for personal interviews or focus groups, and for the online survey, it was 198, which really is a great response rate based on what we've seen, especially for the district's size. So going on, just to overall the strengths of the districts that we gathered from all of these focus groups and the survey. So the most frequent strength perceived and discussed by everyone is that it is a close-knit, small community with the advantage of being in close proximity to New York City. That close-knit community was really said many, many times throughout. Any of the strengths, that was the biggest strength, this community. And I've seen it, like just by being here and just seeing that strength. It's a great feeling and having that proximity, everyone said, to New York City if you did want to get out of that small-town feeling. So that definitely comes across in all of the groups that we felt. There's been also a growing diversity in the town and the schools, which is really good. It shows exposure to a population more representative of the country, and people like the diversity that's coming in. But also, again, coupled with that traditional values and the generations of families here. So it's a really nice mix of that. The residents here are passionate, and they're engaged, especially around the schools. And I think that shows to that small-town feel also. The schools are really the center of your community, and that's why the community is so involved in the schools, it seems. And it really is a strong support of your public schools. Going along with that small-town feel in the schools, it's really nice because there are small class sizes, and I know that really came across as a strength, especially with student group, which you've seen, you know, even in my own school district, that some of the classes are like in the 30s. So, you know, this is, I look at it as a private school and a public school. So you really get the best of both worlds. So those continue to be some of the strengths that everyone really loves about this community. Also, highly dedicated administration, longtime hard-working staff, great teachers. We saw that across the board. Also, in the last few years, there's been a wider variety of academic offerings, and I know that is really important to the students. You know, that does come with challenges based on such a small school district as well, that sometimes you can't give those academic opportunities. But it definitely seems to be something that the school district has been trying to push to offer more opportunities for the students. So despite the challenges that I'm going to talk about, definitely Florida has significant foundational pillars on which to improve. And it really is an intimate learning environment, dedicated and supportive teachers, and engaged and supportive community. And it definitely, the stakeholders have a desire to keep the reputation of Florida as safe and inviting, preparing students to be academically and socially prepared for the future. Some of the challenges now that we saw, there definitely exists some concern among students, staff, the board, community members, repairing and improving relationships throughout the districts and the stakeholder groups. That needs to be addressed. And unifying the community, rebuilding a sense of trust in the district and its leaders will be an important goal for the new superintendent. And you'll see that in the desired characteristics, really needing a unifier, a healer, someone to really reach out, listen to all groups, bring the community together. And that definitely seemed to be something that would go along with also. Transparent communications is something that people want, haven't had maybe in the past. And that's also something that you'll see in the desired characteristics, a good communicator. There is some frustration and, you know, wanting someone with integrity to come in in the areas that this new superintendent will need to focus on. Also, the superintendent will need to address decreasing enrollment, which we've heard throughout as well. Someone that really can understand that with declining enrollment, financial support could sometimes become a concern. And that would be someone that really could deal with that. The lower class size could mean some reductions. So that's definitely, the decreasing enrollment was another challenge that we see. Also, maybe because of the increase in diversity we're seeing in your township, there are also some additional Spanish-speaking students might need some additional Spanish-speaking teachers. And that was brought up a couple of times as well. Also, continuing to improve on student achievement. We've heard some, specifically on math, we've heard a number of times. So that's a challenge point as well. Adding some more rigor to some of the academic programs that you offer, but also offering some appropriate support to those that need it as well. So a good balance between the two. Improving the district's reputation about the educational quality. And an additional challenge, we'll need to facilitate constructive dialogue around curricular issues. Also, there's been an increased student discipline problem. And that was seen, I think, a lot or discussed in our student group as well. So the new superintendent really coming up with more creative solutions for both with mental health and discipline issues in a more constructive way. So that goes over the strengths and the challenges. And we are hoping through this whole report, we will be able to find an individual who possesses most of these skills and characteristics based on the strengths and challenges and the desired characteristics Ed is going to go over. And we will work with the board to continue to raise, find someone who can raise academic standards, student performance, and meet the unique needs of this school district, and really embrace all the great things about the school district. And we just want to give one more thank you to Helen Arena, who's been great in setting up all of these focus groups. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to her because she really has helped us tremendously. Any questions?
Thank you.
No problem. Any questions on the LPR? Would you rather do the desired characteristics first?
Any questions for anyone?
I will turn the mic over to Ed.
All right. Thank you, Karen.
After we got through the initial discussions, what we were really looking for, someone who can lean tall buildings and a single bound. But we ended up designing the leadership, the desired characteristics. When you look at the report itself, there are some things that jump off the page. There's some community division, and I mean community at large, school and community, within the community, within the schools, within the community. So that became a focal point that was addressed and discussed at almost every, with every group that we talked to. Trust was a big issue. And the ability to find someone who was a unifier and had a proven track record of doing such. And there is a, there was a big emphasis on communications and communicator. It is a, a lot of people felt like they were out of the loop and did not get sufficient information, sufficient participation in the process. There is a, so those things were sort of permeated through the list of things that I gave you as we tried to wrap those around. And not all of the things we heard, the type of things we heard, were the things that we focus on in terms of developing the skills, the characteristics page. But those things that were so pervasive, they had an impact on the district that, in our opinion, is what drove the found characteristics page. So we started off by, this page, as you will see up there, focuses on a strong visionary person who's a consensus-building educational leader. So quite a bit, right? So none of the complaints was, in the past, there've been too many changes too fast without enough participation in the greater community, school community, or the external community. So the idea wasn't to find someone who was not only a visionary, but could deepenize people around that vision from both sides of the equation, if you will, and move the educational process forward. So visionary despite, but the ability to build the senses around a vision made it all work. One without the other just would not work. So we started off with the first paragraph with a high emphasis on an individual, a strong visionary person who was a consensus builder and had a proven track record as an educational leader. And some of the specific traits that supported that, we talked about an experienced educational leader who was strategic, but was able to collaborate with all facets of the community. The connect diverse groups and pull together a complex community. I smiled when I wrote that, but someone told us in one of the groups, they said, "We're small, but we're mighty. You're small, you're mighty, but you're also complex." So I think it's an appropriate term in that context. The, this page's decision, able to make decisions, encouraged to make decisions, encouraged to work with the board, encouraged to work with the community. So they were not looking for an individual who was built to us. I didn't put built to us in the document. But they wanted a strong individual, not single-minded, but strongly in their purpose and their ability to convey that to all facets and all parts of the community. And at most, we wanted someone who, after all the said and done, that could prioritize student achievement. That that was a single focus that the new superintendent must possess. A single-minded focus on student achievement. There is a demonstrated ability to address all aspects of learning, social, emotional learning. There is all the mental health needs to basically incorporate those things and deal with them as part of the educational process to promote student achievement. Certainly encourage student voice. And the ability to maintain, to retain, to recruit, and retain a highly qualified staff, a highly qualified diverse staff in the district. There is a, and of course, there are some issues. There's a change in dynamics of finance and population. What would that do to the budgets as you move forward, or capital projects and capital needs? So someone that has some experience in that area would be helpful. There is a, one of the inspirational leaders, the visionary leader, inspirational person who can aspire and motivate the community, motivate students. Motivate a good district to be a great district. So a high emphasis on someone who has done great things in their pride, they make for our life, for our work. A consistent thinker, and I won't read that one of those to you, of course, if you may have already noticed that. But he has a willingness and conviction to stay the course, deal with tough decisions, and stay the course, and student achievement, and deal with first things first, the things that are most important, and that's student achievement, and not lose sight of that. As an important component of the new superintendent. Great communicator and a committed consensus builder. And all of those things, you will see they're typical and trust-building. And our focus will be simply this. We're not going to take anyone's word that they're a great community, committed, they build trust, that they have unified which we are going to look and seek those folks who have a proven track record of doing just stuff. If they can't prove it, chances are you don't see it. There is a, it is, so not only should it be able to talk again, it should have a proven record of success in the past that we can bring to you as part of the process when you're going to select for it. I think with someone who's visible, and I talk about visibility because almost every group focuses on visibility in the community. From students all the way to the administrators, visibility is a big deal. And so we want someone who will manage from outside of their office rather than only in the office, behind closed doors, is a fear of self. The last part is experiences and accomplishments. Simply, that's just the credentials, and we checked all of those ourselves through our third-party certification process that the board has already authorized. They have not, and we know that there would not be one candidate we would bring that would have all of these attributes. I wish I could tell you that. But they should have a significant number of those. And the priority, which the community has shown is a priority for the community, they should certainly possess those attributes as you move forward. And as I mentioned, it has to be demonstrated. It can't be hearsay. It can't be rumor. It can't be just their word. There may be outstanding people who are worthy of trust. We check it all out and make sure that there's a proven track record there. The successful candidate will start July 1st, has been published. The uh successful candidate will start July 1st, has been published. Uh the application deadline mentioned earlier, March 10th. And the uh compensation piece is uh is is a will be reasonably competitive and will be the final decision of the board. Uh and we have a contact group. Click on that and take you right to the application, and everyone can apply. I did mention in the update that we've already started to get applications. Uh we started to talk to people. The uh the at our best state after tonight, we start with including official starts, and I would expect that piece to pick up rapidly over the last couple of weeks or so. And I will be glad to tell you exactly how rapidly that is. And I hope you can talk about how rapidly it is, whether you are slow or is that is that's not the intent, but we will uh we we will return anyway. But I expect that it will pick up after this evening. And as I said, people have already started to uh to apply, and we have applications going forward. With that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Um thank you for that presentation, Karen and Ed, and uh thank you both uh for your efforts to conduct uh the many meetings with the members of our community as well as our district staff uh at all levels. We really appreciate it, and and I will also echo your shout out to Helen Arena, who did a great job coordinating and sending reminders to everyone in the community uh so that they were uh aware of these uh different meetings we held. Uh just for the benefit of of the audience, and and I know I've shared with folks the your info, additional information, and the updates on the search, as well as that timeline, is on the district's website. Uh for the benefit of everyone in the audience, um under the Board of Education section, there's a tab for Superintendent Search and all of the info as far as upcoming dates. Uh key info uh for this process is there. But just could you give a brief overview again on, you know, sort of the next steps and and key dates? You touched on it at the top. I just want to make sure everyone has that info again in case they missed it as far as what's next on the horizon. So tonight, you're looking for the board to approve both the LPR, the Leadership Profile Report, as well as the desired characteristics, so you can move forward with next step.
Yeah, the LPR, I would just ask if you accept it, you don't have to approve it. The uh the uh the uh desired characteristic report, I would ask that you approve that as an official document in the district that will drive all the recruiting efforts and and the uh the interview and evaluation episode of the board at the end of the process. The the key base left. The uh applications will close March 10th. And we will track that, we will probably track it every day. And if there's some modification of that, if we need to send it a couple of days, uh we will do that, but we'll take that time out of out of our care. We will not impact the schedule unless unless there's uh I can't think of anything. Hopefully the uh snow stays away and we can uh we will not be interrupted by that. There is a March 20th is the date that we will bring the slate to the board. Uh that's on a Monday. On the schedule, we have the week of of uh March 20th, that I would ask the board and delegates if they can accommodate a meeting on March 20th, that Monday. Uh would it would uh enhance the process greatly. March 25th, on a Saturday, uh we will uh have the first round of interviews based on the slate presentation. I would expect that to be uh at least five uh highly qualified candidates. Uh there is, we'll see. It could be more, could be less. It uh but that's typically what would happen. Uh and uh if there's more than five, we may have to ask the board to work on Sunday. The uh and uh April 1st, uh we will do the city finalists interviews the next Saturday. Uh you've heard me, my chagrin of having to uh do it on April Fool's Day, but that's just the way the schedule is. Uh and then the preferred candidate will be selected from there. The we will, at that point, uh on that preferred candidate, we will do a deep, deep background check external to us. We have a third party uh company that we use. Uh and the uh and it usually takes a somewhere around uh 10 days to complete that. Uh everything will be done from uh criminal background checks, social news media checks, going back seven years. Uh we will have uh any any uh any activity that is uh, everything from bankruptcy to uh email. I don't even know if I could pass through that point now, but uh uh it is a but it checks everything over the last five years, and the news and and social media piece goes back seven years. There is a uh so that it will take that amount of time. Uh meanwhile, the board will also start their negotiations at during our period of tabs, and I tell you that such that we're ready to announce uh somewhere around April 27th, the week of April 27th, with the Z. And the reason that has made sense, people often will have a 60-day exit uh number from their current contracts. Uh you've heard me say that we will not bring anyone who, chances are, it's always the first step. We will not bring anyone who's out of work. And so most of them will have contracts, and we release 30 days, they'll have 60 days. Uh so it gives them a chance to extricate themselves from their current contract, but it also provides some time for them in a legitimate way. Take a couple of days here and there, provide some overlap uh uh through the end of the year, where the budget is being prepared and and approved, so that he or she would have some input into that budget process that they will inherit July 1st. So it makes sense to to try to get it done in a timely way. If all goes well, and uh uh the person should be officially ready to start uh July 1st. There is a uh we will, if there's some transitional piece that you need us to do, uh if you're available, uh there is a uh if you wanted us to come back and talk about some of the nuances uh that will that have been published, that I think you will show uh on the webpage, uh you'll be happy to be there after the uh after you've selected the candidate during the 60-day period. Uh 60 days, uh it doesn't really matter. Can't Karen may uh may think about that, she hasn't tried three hours to get here. But uh but uh I'm just across the bridge, so we can but we can work it out. The uh if it's important, because I I just don't want you to forget the transition concern. It's not a it's not an an argument for additional sale. Uh but uh that's not on the table. But it is a very important time to to plan the process of going from the old part to the new part and make sure that everybody understands the expectations there are that you do have to meet. Is that is that sufficient, Mr. President?
Yes, thank you, Ed. And um just to reiterate, uh with those timelines you've laid out, as of right now, with the steps that we have gone through in the initial phase, uh we are on schedule and on track uh to maintain this timeline. So that's great to hear, and thank you for your efforts with that.
Well, we thank you. The the board has been very supportive and and helped us to maintain those timelines, and we appreciate that. And and of course, as you look at the timeline, it becomes even more critical for the board to be supportive of that. We have no doubt that you will do just that. Uh there is a uh I I didn't say, you did mention that most of this will be on the uh on the webpage. We did not go to show the notes that we had for the folders group. We did not go through the uh online survey in its entirety, uh but that's available for posting. Uh there is uh nothing there that's uh from the comment standpoint that I definitely agree on, so I think we're posting it that you made. I'm just talking to Michelle anyway, as we post some of the uh uh some of the material, but I think it's all uh pretty pristine and ready for public view.
Yes, and and just so that everyone's clear, uh the information that was shared tonight is the same report, the same info that the board received yesterday.
That's good.
And in the spirit of transparency, which this board is uh prioritizes, it will be shared with the community on the district site, as we had with all the other information. So this report uh and and survey data, uh we thank all of the members of the community and district, our students, et cetera. Uh it was a a big effort, a lot of meetings, I know, uh but it was critical, as you explained, Ed, to get this info upfront versus on the back end, uh because this will serve as as a roadmap for you in the process, as well as the board, to to know what the community, what's on their mind, what they are looking for, desired characteristics in our new leader, uh as far as the superintendent. But there's also the added benefit that when we have the preferred candidate, whoever that ends up being, it will also serve as a guide for them uh to check what's what are hot topics and issues in the community and as they step into that role and and assist us going forward. So it was it was a critical effort, it took a lot of work and meetings. Uh thanks to you and everyone involved in our community who helped do this, and uh the board will be diving deeper into this as we move along the process and use it as a roadmap. So thank you both. If there are no further questions from any other board members, uh I will say, uh number one, the board acknowledges receipt of all the reports. And uh could we have a motion to accept the desired characteristics document as submitted?
I'll so.
All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion's approved. Uh thank you both. Have a good evening, safe journeys home.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you board members, and we look forward to the continued journey.
Thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 19th, 2023 as submitted. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved. And we are on to approval of financial reports.
Uh motion to approve the treasurer's reports from January as submitted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Budget transfers.
Motion to approve budget transfers in the amount of $105,500. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Board acknowledges receipt of the following documents. Six items as submitted. And we're on to privilege of the floor. All right. This is public comment, do we have a separate sheet of privilege? Oh, okay, all right, thank you. So we have a few names here. Uh so I will go ahead and read um our rules for uh privilege of the floor, which also apply to public comments at the end of the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if needed. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now, in our nation and our community, uh are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our board, school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner or demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers, please address their comments to the board directly, rather than the audience. Speakers may address only items pertinent to tonight's meeting agenda. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit your comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period, if you so choose. The board will now entertain public comments for 30 minutes. Each individual speaker is allotted two minutes. The individual time limits will be enforced so that as many members of the public who wish to speak may be allowed to do so. First name for comment, uh privilege of the floor comments on the agenda is Christina. No last name here.
Oh, I guess that's me. Hi.
36 Highland Ave?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay. Good evening, Christina.
Good evening. Um I'm Christina Cody, I'm a Warwickville resident and the mother of a young child uh who's goes to school right a few minutes down the road in Warwick. And I'm here tonight alongside my Florida parent neighbors as a member of common of Defense of Democracy because local influences impacting Florida are also impact impacting Warwick. The first portion of this meeting was spent not addressing the needs of students or planning programs to enrich their academic experiences or to address the burgeoning crisis we're facing in youth mental health. Instead, it was spent discussing an exercise entered into to finding a superintendent while the previous one provided everything on your community's shared list tonight of acquired characteristics. Incidentally, it duplicates the same cost incurred by taxpayers of sourcing this position only a couple of years ago, but adding the $200, the $200,000 payout of the prior contract. Every child matters and all families matter. Tonight, we address the needs of this district to embrace the increasing diversity in the district and acknowledge the needs of the Spanish student population of students, which is commendable because our generation's long and greatly valued migrant community children are deserving of every opportunity without being adversely impacted by language barriers. I heard here tonight there are concerns in areas like math achievement and behaviors and mental health. I also heard a request for maybe some creative approaches. Indeed, the urgency of providing public education and policies that validate all children and families, no matter their status of identity, is a matter of mental health and in lots of cases, suicide prevention that is based in devastatingly real data. And I'm just going to share some information. In 2018, death by suicide was the number two killer of children and young adults ages 10 to 24 in the United States. Youth in the LGBTQ
Thank you.
population
Thank you. Your time is up.
Four times as likely.
We have a lot of people on the list.
Thank you, I appreciate me getting that far. I appreciate it, and thank you for listening, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, uh our next name on the list is Tracy Stroke. All right, our next name on the list is Tracy Stroh.
Hi, I'm Tracy Stroh, I live in Florida, New York, in Cedar Crest. And I represent the nearly 800 people who signed a petition voicing concerns over the school board's strong association with a group called Moms for Liberty. Moms for Liberty has a well-documented reputation for banning books, denying America's history of racism against non-whites, mocking and slandering the queer community, and attacking public education. Our hardworking librarians and teachers are now under constant attack all across the nation. They often can't express their concerns out of fear for their jobs. Some reach out to people like me pridedly, thanking us for saying things in public that they can't safely say themselves without risking their careers, such as, "You forced the resignation of an excellent superintendent with a stellar CV. You did this not only because he's openly gay, but also because he was clear on his goal to help us create an equitable and safe environment for all students, regardless of skin color, or sexual orientation, or gender identity, or any other differences." "You asked at him because he didn't fit into a loud and proud anti-woke political agenda." Yes, sir.
Moms for Liberty and the former superintendent are not on tonight's agenda.
The agenda concerns the choice of the new superintendent, so I think I could be allowed my final minute, if that's okay with you.
Stay on topic with the agenda.
The agenda is the agenda, the agenda addresses the crossover of an old superintendent to a new superintendent. And I really do think that it's relevant. If I don't get to finish here, I would be happy to publish it elsewhere, but I really think it's telling that you don't want me to finish, and I don't understand why. But if you're telling me not to finish, I'm not going to flout the rules.
Well, if you'd like to address an issue on tonight's agenda, there's remaining time.
I am addition, I am addressing this agenda. It has to do with the choosing of a new superintendent that a lot of us think is egregious. And that's why I wanted to finish my commentary. But it does continue on the same vein of why we feel that the choosing of a new superintendent is not something that should be on the table.
Please have.
Thank you, I'll look forward to sharing these comments with you in another venue.
Again, just a reminder, just a reminder, folks, as stated in the rules, which we will enforce across the board for all speakers, we ask that you please limit your comments to items that are actually on the agenda for tonight, so that we don't have to interrupt. Our next speaker, Heather Vines Venus.
Hi, my name's Heather Venus, and I'm also discussing the interim. If you want to stop me now before I begin, I'll just post it. Would you like me to continue?
If it's the same discussion that was just interrupted because it's not on the agenda.
The agenda is the interim.
And it is a problem because it's not-
Then I'll just post this.
Okay.
I'll be happy to do that.
All right, thank you. That's it for privilege of the floor. We will move on. Do we have any announcements or correspondence? Okay. Administrative buildings presentations. Athletics is up first.
Sorry, buddy. I just want to give you an overview of our merging and our shadowing through Chester and Warwick. We would like to continue that relationship with Chester as a merger shadow for the 2023-2024 school year, including any off-season training as both ADC fit. We would also like to continue the shadow of our girls and boys swimming and diving with Warwick. Participation this year, as I give you some numbers, we actually started in the spring of 2022 with Chester. We had three student athletes for the track and field, which was a shadow. We had one student athlete who did JV girls cross country, I'm sorry, lacrosse. In the fall of 2022 with Chester, we had seven student athletes for the modified A football merge, four student athletes for the varsity football merge, and we had six Chester student athletes come to us to merge for the modified girls soccer. At Warwick, we had the one student who shadowed for girls varsity swimming. For the winter, we had the shadow at Warwick with the boys swimming and diving. Again, our relationship with Warwick with the shadow has been spot on. And Chester even more so, as we discussed last week. Positive feedbacks, more kids are even coming out now. We have a comparison to last year's spring season, and we had more and more girls want to come out for JV lacrosse. And we actually doubled in interest for the spring track. So everything's up and up, and I thank you for the opportunity. And I know we're voting on it today. Does anybody have any questions?
I thank you for that presentation, and as we discussed, I think you were referencing the work session too.
Work session, what I said.
A week ago, that's okay.
Yeah, my time's all messed up, is it break soon?
Well, we're just trying to be careful so no one accuses the board of holding secret meetings.
Yes, no, no secret meetings.
All our meetings are open to the public, and we're fully transparent. But I just want to thank you because I remember last year, there were some questions and concerns. This was a new arrangement. As I said at the work session, you did a great job just explaining the need for this new arrangement. And I just want to recap because it deserves to be highlighted that we have now successfully gone through a year. Our students have been treated well by the other schools where they participated. They have provided positive feedback to their friends and other athletes. And more kids are signing up and expressing an interest, and we're looking to expand, you know, our programs, as you touched on. I think lacrosse is growing, we discussed, you know, just if there are folks in the community or even students who have a desire to get teams going that maybe we are unable to offer, you know, we would love to get them involved and coordinate with our athletics department to pull in more students and find ways to make these things happen. So I just want to congratulate you, give that recognition, commend our students on the job they've done working with a slightly different arrangement than we may prefer. But this is an opportunity for them to participate in these sports versus not having an opportunity at all. That deserves to be highlighted, and you know, I thank you for that.
Awesome, thank you so much.
I think one more item to add is because of the relationship we have with Chester and because we've had that sort of back-and-forth camaraderie with us allowing Chester students to participate on some of our teams and Florida participating in some of Chester teams, that Chester has actually reduced the cost for football participants significantly.
Dramatically.
Significantly, so that's a testament to you and the work that you've done and the culture that you've built between the two school districts, so we thank you for that.
Thank you.
And one last point that deserves to be highlighted, which we also talked about, is we're looking to have off-season workouts for our athletes.
For our kids to start building relationships outside of the season and not just stick to football, we're sticking to everything. Anybody who wants to do it can participate, and we'll do whatever it takes to make that happen.
Thank you for that.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, we have our Golden Hill update listed next.
So the Golden Hill update and the Seward update and some of the business office update is sort of combined together in this presentation.
Right.
So we're going to start it back. Based on interest classes. It'll be a six-to-eight week time period. And once again, the clubs are Beekeeping, BuildItstem, American Sign Language, Art Club, and Spark. And right there, you can see the costs that are associated with such. Teachers will be approximately $1,632 and program materials anywhere from $1,100 to $1,700.
Okay, so similarly, we are looking to responsibly and very purposefully use these funds to address learning loss or media needs amongst our students coming out of the pandemic so that we can make sure that our students are not only getting any remediation that they may need, but also the opportunity to get on track with graduation if they've fallen behind and really recover fully from the Ls of the pandemic when we went back to our academic games. So at Seward, we're looking to do a summer school retention prevention program to get ahead of the possible need for summer school or retention. We know that those two things are not on anybody's want-to-do list, so we want to get students an opportunity to get caught up now. We're just past the midway point of the school year. We have students who are failing two or more classes, which would put them in danger of possibly being retained, possibly having to go to summer school. We want to give them an after-school program where they work with teachers and a low-student-to-teacher ratio and can work on organizational skills, can get that extra help in math, can get their homework done. Just a time and space that is designed to be productive and get their work done. And hopefully, obviously, with the intent to improve our overall academic performance. The credit recovery and acceleration program is a little bit different. What we're looking to call this is the SS Seward Evening Institute. This would allow students to take credit-bearing courses for the high school level during the school year in an evening setting. So they basically would be a condensed, concentrated program. They would be in a low-student-to-teacher ratio with an online program. The platform of the actual course delivery would be through an online component. They would sign up for the course, let's say it's U.S. History and Government, usually an 11th grade course. Maybe I've struggled as a senior and I'm struggling to get my social studies credits and before graduation, I want to graduate on time. Well, we'll allow you to take this course two times a week. I'm actually thinking we might have to do three times a week. We initially planned for 20 weeks, so all the numbers that you will see here are going to be the same as far as the money is concerned, but we're moving to the point where we have less than 20 weeks left. So we're trying to still get them the sessions in so that they can complete the coursework. It just might have to be a little bit more intense over the remaining weeks that we have in the school year to get them that credit overall for the school year. We would like to, if the program works, extend that program into next year because as Lori explained, the funds can be spent up until the end of September in '24. So that's something that we are looking to plan for and think ahead of. If this is something that works and something that should be continued, we'll look to do that and implement it once again next year. The Regents Review Sessions, this is something that we've done typically, but we're looking to expand. We want our students to have proper preparedness going into the Regents' exams. A lot of our students for many years, we didn't have the Regents' exam during the COVID pandemic. Now we're coming back, and this is the first time students have been exposed to these standardized testing situations in a long time. And that's going to have an impact on performance. We saw our students struggle with Regents' exams last year in some areas. We want to support them in the year to come because New York State has not lifted the Regents' requirements for graduation. So I think it's really important for us to invest some time and money here in Regents' review towards the end of the year. We're looking at a total of 15 sessions, and we'll talk about the cost breakdown. But overall, the idea is to make sure that the students may have passed the course, right? Have been in a different course for now the majority of the year, and they're not getting, say, review, and I'm just using it as an example, Algebra I, they're not getting that review in the course, and it'd be really good to have some extra test prep for that test and increase their odds of getting that credit. So what the plan would look like for the Evening Institute? We're talking about for high school students only, obviously, because it's for high school credit. Two weeks per week, like I said, possibly three days per week for the first few weeks. Transportation would not be provided, this would be on the students and their guardians to transport to and from. Students would have a certified teacher, but I want to be clear that the certified teacher would not necessarily be an expert in every field, right? You don't find so many people who are certified in English, math, and biology. So this would be a certified teacher to help them really as a facilitator through the online platform. If they're having difficulty, help them navigate the website, help them retrieve the work that they have to complete, et cetera. Transportation, I got that, low-student-to-teacher ratio. We're looking at less than a 10-to-1 setting for the students. And again, the primary purpose is credit recovery as well as acceleration. If a student, for example, is in their junior year, wants to take more college classes in their senior year and their schedule isn't really giving the space that would afford that opportunity, well, they can get some of that credit done ahead of time and ultimately make room for more rigorous college-level courses in their senior year. The overall cost that we're looking at there, you see the big total of $14,600 for this year. Of course, if the program were to be successful and we look to extend that next year, we are anticipating that cost to be approximately double because we would like to start that program in early October once the school year kind of settles in and gets students on the program as soon as possible working towards their credits and possibly multiple high school credits over the course of the year. We're looking at just one teacher for this program, definitely to start off. We are, we talked about the possibility of having a nurse on hand or on call, given the evening hours and the amount of students that would be enrolling in the program being pretty limited. The need for a nurse might not be immediate on hand at all times, but we do have nurses personally that live close by and would be willing to be on call. And we would have a security guard here at the building to allow students in and out after hours, obviously. I feel like we deleted the after-school retention and prevention program. So I'm just going to give you a quick oversight on that. That is, again, not somebody who's going to be certified in everything, so going back to the original overview slide, because I think we just eliminated one by mistake, we'll make sure it's in there where it goes along the website. So the Summer School Retention and Prevention Program, that's more of a very intensive study hall, not kids just showing up doing whatever they want. The kids don't go in front of the teacher, hey, what do we have, what's on deck? Let's look at the Google Classroom, open up the to-do list, and get organized with your materials so that we can get students completing their work. What we're seeing overwhelmingly is that students are having difficulty staying organized, staying on top of all the work that's being required of them as we come back to, you know, fully imperfect and going back to the way things were, and you know, it never will be the same. But that is something that students are struggling with and staff members are seeing it. Students are feeling the stress result of it. And it's going to be a program to help students who are really struggling here at least have a quiet space to get their work done with the assistance of a certified teacher. And then the last piece of that program is the Regents' Review. The Regents' Prep Sessions, we're looking to begin tentatively May 15th, go right through June 13th, which is right before the beginning of the Regents' Administration. The review is in nine different Regents' exams or areas based on need, so we might not have the same amount allotted for every single Regents' exam. We have far fewer students taking physics and chemistry than we do Algebra I, and global history, for example, so those will have more of the review sessions, a larger chunk of those that we would like to make available. They would run Monday through Thursday with transportation provided. And I'd like to add that the Summer School Retention and Prevention Program, that would also have transportation provided for students after school. The only one that does not have transportation provided would be the Evening Institute. And again, this is done by a certified teacher, but the difference here being they will be certified in the content area of the tests that they are helping students prepare for. They would look to do hour-and-a-half sessions, 15 of them, and that's an hourly contractual rate there, which gives you the total of the $14,850. I get that's for this school year, we would likely look to continue that next year. And it's just out of order, it didn't disappear, which is great because there's no way I was going to recall those numbers off the top of my head. So I was just thinking, how am I going to remember what it costs? So the total there, the big number is the $17,766 for this school year. Again, it would probably be something not quite double. We wouldn't start in the first marking period, we'd wait to see where grades are, how students are performing over the course of the first marking period next year, and probably look to implement during the second marking period about halfway through. So that would be approximately beginning of December to start this program up once again, if it's successful this year, if it works. We already talked through this, transportation is provided, hour-and-a-half sessions, 2:25 to 3:55, work completion, organization, study skills are the focus here. Work completion, organization, study skills are the focus here. What you'll see here is based on the data that we've already collected, based on student need and how many students are struggling in two or more classes to pass. We have a need for one section at the middle school and we have a need for two sections at the high school level, which would require three total teachers. And the numbers there are based on a stipend that we're looking to compensate teachers with that was roughly sketched out using contractual language in cooperation with the FTA leadership. We also would look to have a nurse on hand. It would be extending the day a couple of days a week for the nurse, so they would voucher for that as well as a security guard present for that. And a lot of these things, I should add, with the security guard, we are, we're giving the worst-case scenario of how much money we would have to spend. We do believe that there would be some savings here because there would be some double dipping. There are a lot of events at Seward, so we will have security guards and sheriffs and sometimes nurses available at these events anyway, which would coincide with the timing of these programs and it might not necessarily all be on the expense of this program. Okay. That was a lot. Are there any questions about that piece of it? Okay, we're good. So this is then going into the summer programs. You saw, Laurie broke it down, there's kind of the learning loss and remediation portion of the funding, and then there's a summer program portion of the funding. And it's pretty simple at Seward. We have not had a traditional summer school setting at Seward for students who did not pass, you know, that two of, unfortunately failed two or more of their core area subjects. We are looking to implement that once again because what we're seeing is that over the course of the pandemic, there was no retention and no real active prevention of retention. And therefore, really, the heart of this is remediation. Students are struggling when they go from Math VII to Math VIII without mastering what's the content matter of Math VII, especially in our very sequential subjects like mathematics. So that's one of the areas that we are looking to provide an opportunity to have in-house summer school located right here at home where students can come into Seward during the summer for a four-day-per-week program to get that done. High school will run as it has run in the past. It is sponsored by Monroe Woodbury High School. Our students would go over there. Parents would be, or guardians would be responsible for transportation to and from summer school at Monroe Woodbury High School. And the Regents exams, for those students who, for whatever reason, weren't able to pass the Regents and get the credit, the credit there overall for the course, even though they passed the course, they can take the Regents in August, and that would also be administered at Monroe Woodbury High School. Golden Hill, they got a lot more going on in the summer than we do.
Yeah, the summer enrichment experience, as I had mentioned earlier, key themes in each grade band level will be grades one, two, three, four, and then five. The summer school students will receive the opportunity to engage in enriching experience once a week. So like I said earlier, one of these days we'd have an enriching experience, which we're already looking into. We have interested teachers already that want to jump in to be able to teach the summer school, so we have a lot of excitement about that as far as the teaching staff. So I think it's going to be a great experience for the students this summer. It's a little repetitious at the top, so I won't say that again, but I'll let you know about the cost breakdown. As you can see, five teachers, approximately $14,400. Definitely have a nurse on hand like we did last summer, and security was there as well. And the possible cost of any enrichment experiences that are going to go wrong with this could run around $2,000. So we're looking at approximately $24,440 as a cost for the summer enrichment program.
So we also engaged with The Village with regard to the summer recreation program and them hosting their program at Golden Hill this year. So we've already engaged in that conversation and we're building plans surrounding that as well. We had a lot of great feedback last year with regard to the enrichment program at Golden Hill and how it coincided with the summer recreation program. We kind of benefited each other, and so we're looking to repeat that this year, except this year, those programs will be in sync. I know last year we had one that began a little sooner and it was a little off-kilter with timing, so we're going to condense that and make sure that they coincide with each other. This is a brief overview of the findings, of all the information that was shared tonight, a breakdown. As you can see, we have the total costs and the proximity of this year for '22, '23, and we look to repeat those like Mr. Mosano on this slide, like I said, for the next school year, and therefore pretty much depleting those grant funds that were provided to us to really help benefit all of our students that we serve. So does anyone have any questions?
I just would like to say in defense of our school district because there was an inaccurate and unfair comment earlier on that we're not taking steps to help our students. Perhaps that premature comment should have been held until this presentation was given. And board wants to thank all of you, all of our leaders here, and also extend the thanks to our former treasurer, Chris Wazinski, who was a big part of this team effort, our building leaders, our leaders in admin, the business office, put a lot of work into this. It was a long discussion last month and we walked through everything. Mr. Mosano, I'm glad you hit, for the benefit of the folks, these numbers are, were conservative, cautious, worst case, you could describe them, projections. There's a very good chance we will come in under these numbers. And we spoke at length about the need. We have a limited amount of remaining funds of, you know, COVID relief, these two grant programs, and we really wanted to focus on our students and get as much thing for the buck in multiple ways for them. And, you know, you gave the 30,000 foot view, I'll do the 50,000. There are three main pieces to this program to help our students. There's the after-school component where, as we touched on, Regents Prep is going to be a big part of it. Live instruction and extra help with test prep, homework, whatever's on the horizon in a small class setting, approximately 10 students with a teacher to provide guidance. We have our summer programs and we have our evening programs, which we discuss also. We have students who, for different reasons, maybe they're at Bosie's doing CTEC during the day and unable to take a class offer during the same time, or, you know, some of our high achievers may want to get ahead and get additional credits. So, you know, we're trying to help them with additional offerings. Transportation will be provided for summer programs as well as our afternoon programs. For the evening program, understandably, our students will have to make arrangements on their own. But what you have tried to do, our leaders with this effort, and I want to thank you for this, is help all of our students, whatever their needs are, whatever their levels are. So students who may be having some trouble with their algebra or whatever the subject is, or have a Regents coming up that, you know, maybe they're a little bit nervous, we're going to offer them help for our high achievers who maybe aren't having those issues but want to use their time in school wisely and get ahead and maybe get college credits, et cetera. We're offering them opportunities and we're offering everyone opportunities in the summer with our enrichment programs, which really are a great list of offerings. I love the SPAR program, Mrs. Lisek. I think kindness and all of those values are critical, especially at a young age, that foundation to build for our students. So I know a lot of work went into this. I want to thank all of you. We have a sound plan and the board asked plenty of questions at that meeting. And we did go through, not a 30,000 foot, but at a much closer level into the weeds with the math on this and can we make it work and is this the best use of the remaining funds? Based on the presentations you gave, the board has full confidence. And obviously, this is, this is our initial plan, move it forward. We will tweak it as needed as we get real-time feedback on are we addressing the needs of all our students with this plan? Are there other areas for better uses? It's a work in progress, but I thank you for your team, you know, effort and doing this for our students. So, you know, hats off to you all and thank you again, and, you know, you have the board's full support in executing this plan.
We thank you for that. Without your support, we wouldn't be able to move forward, so we thank you for that. The presentation will be available on the website. We have an article that goes along with it with a little bit of an explanation, so any questions, you know where to reach us. We're eager to get started, real eager to get started.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, so if that covers sort of our combined team effort, I had a feeling...
I shut the chat off. I'm sorry.
Fire that up. This is important.
It might take a minute.
Yeah, that's fine. This is important.
Are you my assistant? I'll go fast. Okay. Okay. I guess I can start. I think you'll see that. Okay, so this is the revenue and just an overview of the budget and a little bit of an update. So there's our wonderful students there, and I like to put a picture because it always reminds us what we're doing this for. And, you know, even though we're in the business office, we want to be a part of the school just as much as we can.
Congrats to the class of 22 once again.
Yes, yes. Congratulations. Successful student. Okay, I'm just going to take a look at the budget at a glance. These were some slides that I had on my last presentation, but I updated them a little bit. The proposed budget for the upcoming year, $25,364,840. This should be an increased budget of about 4% from last year. This is a tentative number. We're really trying hard to keep it at that 4%. I mean, inflation and CPI and everything that's going on in this world that's making us increase, it's tough, but we are trying to keep it at that 4%. We are looking at under a 2% tax levy increase. This is our goal for next year. The three-part budget, we have capital of $14.6, administrative $16.2, and programs $16.2. Just going to remind you a little bit of what comes out of those parts of the budget. So there's the operation of the plant, the maintenance of the plant, debt service, that's all part of capital, the administrative, legal services, central admin, payroll, clerical, administrators, benefits for admin, secretaries for admin, all comes out of that part. Programs, instruction, transportation for program, benefits for program. And these numbers have been adjusted a little bit. We're literally adjusting the budget almost every day, you know? We don't need that, we'll take that out, we need that, we'll put that in. So this is a work in progress. So the three-part budget right now, we're administrative at $4,244,000. That's about 16% of the budget. Capital, $3,522,000, 13.9% of the budget. And then programs, $17,818,000. So that's 70.1% of the budget. And that's, you know, sort of around those numbers, or like the 16, 14, 17s where we are. We're still receiving retirement notices, we have changed to transportation. The ad for the RFP actually goes out next week, so I would be sending a copy of that. We negotiated that with Chester to do a joint one, so we hope to get a great company, great rates. So we'll be adjusting the budget around that, too. Our state aid came in wonderful.
And Laurie, I'm just going to jump in quickly.
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize for interrupting, but this is one of a series of presentations we'll be giving on the budget. As you said, it's, we'll say, a fluid situation as more information comes in to assist you, you're able to make adjustments to the number. But one thing I just want to touch on quickly, when you presented last month, at that point, you didn't have the data on state aid, which is a huge component of our budget projections. So, you know, now we have that, so you were able to make, you know, some adjustments to this projection.
Right.
I just wanted to highlight that because it is a critical piece and as we move forward, there will be more adjustments as more information comes in. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, so we had about a 16.55% increase. So we saw our major increases were in foundation aid, the universal prepaid, we had a huge increase in that. That money is grant money, so we're applying to hopefully add some more enrollment there.
We want to hit that. That's a big one. That's a big one. We have...
I don't know if I'm allowed to say, we've been working on this like crazy.
We have a, we have a successful, we have a successful universal prepaid program, and that number there, we want to highlight it, is almost double.
Yes.
And the goal here is to continue that success with the goal of expanding our program to offer it to more families in our district. So that deserves to be highlighted as well.
Right, yeah. We also believe like when you, you know, we hope to get them in at those young ages, keep them in the school, you know, then they build relationships with each other, and it's great. So we noticed, so overall, it's a 16.5% increase. You know, there was Bosie's, that's expense aid that came in, high-cost excess cost aid that came in. Most of that is on our special ed students. Transportation aid, building aid went down a little bit. So, you know, all this is going to help bring the tax levy down. Oh, now it's working too well. Let me go back to, we do have to remember, so back in 2007, there was a formula they created for foundation aid, and they've never been able to fully fund it. So all these years, they've been trying to get it back to us and trying to do it back to us. We finally are at full, a full base in our foundation aid. But that means those big increases that we're seeing in foundation aid, we're not going to see them anymore. We should probably, I shouldn't say we're not going to see them anymore. We don't know if we're going to see them anymore because we don't know what the government will do and if we'll get, you know, large increases. But right now, we're fully funded with that formula. So unless they come out with new formulas, we don't know what will happen. But we do have to be careful going forward because we can't count on state aid the way that we're counting it now.
That's an important point, yeah.
So some of the revenue for that state federally, we're figuring about $8,645,700. Again, that's an estimate tax levy. We want to see it under 2% increase. Miscellaneous tuition and interest, that went up quite a bit. Our interest is doing very well. We structured some accounts differently and Chris Wazinski, our past treasurer, had helped with that as well, so that was a great thing that he did. Fund balance, you know, we hope to get some of the fund balance towards that as well. This was a calculation that I explained last time, but I, this was not saying that we're going to get a 3.46% increase. This is a formula, so this is not something that can be adjusted. It's based on your state aid, it's based on your amount of debt that you owe and you have to pay, and your state aid coming in. So that is where the adjustments come in. And this is a set formula. This is what gets recorded. This is what we have to put in the court, the business portal. So this cannot be changed. It's not saying that we have to levy taxes that amount. This is a tax levy limit. This is what we can legally vote to without getting a supermajority vote. So this is the amount we could raise taxes, but, you know, it would be voted on, of course. And also, if we wanted to go past that, we would have to get a supermajority vote. That's not our intent, though. Our intent is to stay under 2%. So this is the true value tax rate. We have had some questions about tax rates in different towns, so I just wanted to kind of address that a little bit. So tax rates basically work by equalization rate. So when your house is assessed, each town is different. So Warwick is assessed at 10, and these are the last year's rates because I don't have the new ones yet. Warwick is assessed at 10.85%. Ocean is assessed at 49.5%. So it would not be fair to have them pay taxes on, you know, their property values like that, so you have to bring them to true value. So bringing them to true value, Warwick, we have $73,4391. The equalization rate is 10.85%. So, this is the amount we could raise taxes, but, you know, it would be voted on, of course. And also, if we wanted to go past that, we would have to get a super majority vote. That's not our intent, though. Our intent is to stay under 2%. So, this is the true value tax rate. We have had some questions about tax rates in different towns, so I just wanted to kind of address that a little bit. So, tax rates basically work by equalization rate. So, when your house is assessed, each town is different. So, Warwick is assessed at 10, and these are the last year's rates because I don't have the new ones yet. Warwick is assessed at 10.85%. Notion is assessed at 49.5%. So, it would not be fair to have them pay taxes on, you know, their property values like that. So, you have to bring them to true value. So, bringing them to true value, Warwick, we have $73,439.1. The equalization rate is 10.85. You have to divide it by that. The true value is 672,943,696. That's 88.6% of the levy. So, that is Warwick would be paying 88.6 of our tax levy. Notion, their equalization rate, 49.5, divide it, you get the 86,227,143. Their portion is the 11.4%. So, those are the portion of the levy that Warwick and Notion, the $14,237,1043, has $1,831,0032. Those are the amounts that Warwick and Notion are going to pay. Now, to get the true value tax rate, you need to take that amount and you need to divide it by the true value to get the percentage. So, that, I'm not going to repeat the whole number with that 14, because my mouth is starting to drop. That 14 million over the true value is where you get the 21.16 per thousand, and that's a true value tax rate. And that's, so the $1,800,000 over the true value of Notion, that also will be the 21.16 per thousand tax rate. So, that is called a true value tax rate. So, when we look at tax rates, we look, we're looking at a public analysis. So, we have Tuxedo, Florida, Warwick, and Lake. Now, they're all, their true value tax rates are all in the 20s there. Florida is a little higher, and we'll see that, but Florida does not have some of the industry that some of these other towns have. Tuxedo falls far below, but that is also because Tuxedo does not have a large enrollment right now. It's very small, small administration, small amount of teachers, so...
Unique situation.
Yes, very unique there. We've had a lot of teachers come here from there, actually. So, that was just comparing them a little bit. I mean, we walk our, kind of, around the same, it's a little bit more for Florida right now, but, you know, we're hoping to adjust this.
But as you touched on, and to give credit, Mr. Sherman touched on in our work session, in addition to the difference in our tax base, our school district doesn't have the commercial property and industrial parks like some of our neighbors. Chester, for example, has a lot of industrial and commercial space that also can contribute. So, you know, that's, that's, that's an important factor to consider as we look at, you know, these numbers as well.
Right. So, those towns do have a lot more industry, so either we need Amazon to come in. We don't want that one.
Well, it's, it's, it's a quality of life...
Right.
...issue for the community. Do you want the small community feel with limited commercial? Or do you want to have the industrial spaces and commercial property and parks? So, that, we as a community, and this goes beyond the school district, that's, that's something for our leaders in local government, as well as the county level, you know, to work on together. And there is a positive aspect to having the type of community that we have, but it means sometimes the rates, you know, may not look like our peers who do have those spaces. So, that's, that's something to consider as well.
So, you know, we're really looking at the budget. We're trying to find ways we can save. You know, we're looking at snow plowing. We've spent a lot on snow plowing over the years. We spent $12,000 a day, so we're really looking into that because we haven't had much snow. Electricity, we're looking at our electric bills. We're hoping with the solar, and we do plan on having a presentation on that at some point, but we're hoping that that, we'd really like to track that and see how that's going to affect everything, and hopefully it will decrease by a lot. The telephone, we're looking into the telephone. Our bills are very high there. So, we're just trying to find ways that we can cut corners where we can.
And also, thank you for showing that because it, it needed to be highlighted, and we discussed it at our work session in detail. You know, this board takes its responsibilities very seriously with respect to financial oversight and, you know, wise use of taxpayers' dollars, and our leadership does as well. And the discussion we had was that we always need to be looking where we can for ways to get savings for our taxpayers because every dollar's precious. Now, you had the slides up earlier. We're almost 70% of our budget. That part, there's very little room to move because we're talking about taking care of our teachers with salaries, with TRS, the retirement, with health benefits. And we want to take care of our teachers, and we do. But that's 70% of our budget. So, where we're talking, you know, other savings that can be found, like the slide you just had up, we're absolutely double and triple checking, you know, as you explained to the board. And we expect that because we're a small district with a smaller budget, and we need more bank for our bug because those taxpayer dollars are precious. So, thank you for highlighting this. And in addition, we talked about the buses. You touched on it earlier. You know, there have been issues with the current company. We have RFPs out, but in addition to that, checking what's available in the market for other alternatives, we have joint forces with Chester to leverage, the combined leverage of two school districts working together, putting out RFPs to see if we can find additional savings there. So, these are some important examples of steps that are being taken in our district to find savings for our taxpayers. And I'm glad that you highlighted that. Thank you.
So, some of the other things we just recently saved on, you know, we had a freezer repair that we're doing next week. Instead of renting a refrigerated unit, we were able to really, like, work on combining everything and getting it just into one freezer so that we could save the $750. And maybe that's, I mean, to me, that sounds like a lot of money, and maybe it doesn't sound like a whole lot when you look at the budget, but that is something. And anywhere we can save, we're trying to save.
Every dollar counts.
Yes, every dollar.
Yeah.
We've been using our own bus drivers to drive to athletic events. You know, so far, I guess, we've just been about 10 events this year, but on every trip like that, we save about $200. So, another $2,000 savings. Using the grant money to make maintenance repairs on the H vac. It's really great to try to use some of this money on things like that because when you're using it on a salary, then the next year, you have to build it back into the budget. So, for something like this, if we can get some things done with this grant money, it's just going to be a lot easier on the budget than to have to the next year, try to increase it to now pay for all those other things. So, the total savings, you know, just on some recent things we've done, $38,750. The $7,000 is going to be no repair, and the $29,000 is for H vac that we have to repair. And then, just if anyone is seeking relief or assistance, we have STAR, enhanced STAR Veterans exemptions, so you can contact your local taxpayers' office. So, that was just a little update on the budget, and we'll be having more updates as we go along.
Good, thank you. I think we're on to facilities now.
Mr. Gracie is, he's unable to be here this evening. He doesn't feel well. So, I have a couple items that he asked me to speak on his behalf. Our groundskeeper is working on some of the low spots on the athletic fields up at Golden Hill. He added some clay, and he placed the tarps in specific areas, so to help the upkeep with the fields at Golden Hill. The architect firm did a walkthrough and scheduled, that's scheduled for next week. They're looking to close out some work associated to the project. Our controls company for H vac is working on some loose ends. We have some items in the building management system, which is that electronic that helps regulate the heating and the cooling. And Lori touched on the coolers, right? Right, so the chillers, the condenser and the compressor at Golden Hill for the refrigerator and the freezer will be replaced next week. So, on behalf of Mr. Gracie.
Thank you, Mrs. Cass.
You're welcome.
And now, we're on to your report.
On to mine. So, I'm excited because we have some, some pretty cool things going on. And as Lori Cattell just presented on some savings, we just got word today, just noticed today from the Emergency Connectivity Fund, also known as ECF. It's a program that initiated a couple years ago from the FCC, and basically, it was a huge program, billions of dollars, that were provided to schools. It assists with providing laptops and tablets and connectivity, internet connectivity to schools. And basically, if you're a school, you're a library, you're eligible, you had to apply, you had to go through the process. There were three rounds of applications, and this district took advantage of all three of those. So, we talk about savings, right? We talk about different ways that we can, we can save money or mitigate some of the money that might be used in different areas. In 2021, our district provided information and applied for funding in year one, and we were awarded $173,500, and that was for Chromebooks, and another $6,300 for internet connectivity. So, that total in year one that we did not have to spend budget money on was $179,800. That's significant when you look at the budget overall. In year two, we did apply again. We were awarded $30,000, and that was again for Chromebooks. And this year, very exciting. We worked very hard to submit this application, and we were awarded a total just over $44,000, and that is for iPads and a very limited amount of MacBooks. And that will help benefit our technology program, our ARPS program, and other areas where we have sort of the Chromebooks that are, the way that our district moves forward, provides an opportunity for students to learn from different platforms and not just that one single. So, kudos to the business office for helping with that application.
With something, but quickly, because this is something you have mentioned that deserves to be repeated. We're a small district, we have a smaller budget, but with respect to technology, we're doing a great job for our students with respect to, every student in our district has access to Chromebook. And as you just touched on, we are finding ways to get additional technology into our district with the iPads and MacBooks to assess, assist with our technology programs and art as well. So, you know, nice work to everyone involved with enhancing our technology for our students. We're all well-connected, and, you know, that's great to hear.
And just a side note and any message on, on that initiative, that is of no cost to the district. So, it's not as if we have to lay the money out and then, you know, it comes back to us in the following year. That is no cost to the district. That is a significant savings that we were able to apply for and be awarded. So, congratulations. Let's see. Next up, we have some end-of-life AEDs in our school buildings, and I shouldn't say the AEDs are end-of-life, but the boxes that house the AEDs are semi-end-of-life. Some of them are damaged. So, if you look behind me, hopefully you can see over me, we have a couple life safety stations, and you'll see that they're compartmentalized. We're going to install those life safety stations in every place that we have an AED currently, and then some additional places in some of our school buildings. The industry standard is that you should have access to one of these stations or an AED within three minutes of wherever you are. So, we are again installing some of these. The compartments will hold an AED, they'll hold a Narcan kit, an EpiPen, a first aid kit, and then multiple stop-the-bleed kits. And then, we're also training staff. We have some courses that some of our staff has already signed up for. We have a HeartSaver, which is a CPR AED course, first aid. And we've also held courses on emergency situational sessions. So, as I said, a number of staff have registered for those, so not only will we have our school nurses prepared in emergency situations, but we'll have other staff prepared as well. We already spoke about the universal prepay program. Kudos to Debbie Lysak, who spent so much time getting that application ready. Lori Cattell, who, I think her fingers are raw from typing and making edits, and Helen Arena, who really worked diligently on, on that application. And I was ready to drive it to Albany tomorrow, but Helen said, "No, we can get it to the post office in time tonight." So, that happened, and so we did complete that application, and it was sent on its way this afternoon. So, congratulations, thank you. We have our fingers crossed that we're going to be awarded and have additional prepay programs available to our younger population. The Seward graduation tent, a topic of great discussion in the last couple of years. And I have to say, right around December, we gathered as a leadership team and said, "What do we want graduation to look like? What should it look like? What has it looked like in the past, and what will it look like in the future?" And we were able to get an RFP out, which is sort of a bid, and those are due by the end of the month. So, we are on track to have a tremendous graduation for our seniors this year. And I think maybe eighth grade? I may have misspoken, so I just won't say anything then. But with that said, we are, we're on track for the tent. I know there's been some chatter out there in the community.
And I'll just jump in quickly because I want to give credit where credit is due. We're on track, perhaps ahead of schedule with respect to our tents for graduation. But Mrs. Hill contacted me because all of us are always looking for ways to make improvements, find savings. So, I want to give credit to Mrs. Hill, who noticed that one of our local party rental businesses is closing shop after 50 years, and they had some tents. So, you know, we had a discussion. It was explored as to whether it would be cost-effective for the district to perhaps purchase a large tent to see if we could get an additional savings over having to rent it each year. There are a lot of issues to consider beyond the tent itself. Does the district have a way to store such a large tent? I think we were looking at, I think, 60 by 120 feet large tents. So, does the district have space to store it? In addition to the storage, you have to maintain the tents. What capabilities do we have in-house to maintain and then put the tents up and down? So, further discussions and calls were made, looking at not only the cost, but insurance issues, liability and legal issues, et cetera. And in the end, we also looked at if we purchase it, we likely will have to bring in outside teams or vendors to put it up and down because they have that expertise. So, we explored all of these different issues. In the end, you know, Mr. Gracie and Mrs. Cass, and maybe a little bit Joe Russo from a prior discussion, our friend at BOCSE's, the decision was made to proceed as planned, and we can revisit in the future what our options are. But we want to make sure, you know, everyone understands, these are things that go on behind the scenes that aren't always shared or posted, but we are working together on these important issues to make sure our seniors and possibly new graders as well, I hope so, have, you know, a nice graduation, rain or shine, with a protective tent. So, you know, a lot of work goes on behind the scenes that folks in the community and the district and, you know, parents may not always hear about. And that's why I'm just pausing here to, you know, let folks know about these efforts that go on every day behind the scenes. So, thank you, Mrs. Cass.
Thank you, thank you. As many of you know, last week, we had some lockdown drills in both of our school buildings. And just to report back real briefly, all the technology that's included in that, stroke announcements and such, everything worked flawlessly. And we always look at timing because timing is critically important in these types of situations for response. And we had our, our classrooms were cleared, 10 minutes, right? It was just about 10 minutes within each. And our first responders were actually contacted via text within seconds. It was one to two seconds. And the 911 center was alerted within seven to eight seconds. That's an excellent, excellent response time. Anything under 15 seconds is exemplar. Anything above that, you want to work on your system a bit. So, we're in really good shape in, in that department. And the last piece I want to touch on are some of the really great things that we have going on in our school buildings right now. There's, as Mr. Angotti said, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, and not everyone realizes all the work that goes into that. So, to begin with, we have a technology integrator. We've had this position for a number of years, and it's taken different looks throughout the years. Basically, the technology integrator works to implement technology in classrooms, works with teachers, and works with students on a daily basis. And so far this year, our tech integrator has worked a lot with the NICE's Computer Science and Digital Literacy Standards, with a heavy focus on the impacts of computing, computational thinking, networks and systems design, cybersecurity, and digital literacy. computational thinking, networks and systems design, cybersecurity, and digital literacy. There's a lot of time spent in classrooms, again, with teachers and students, working on those digital citizenship pieces, robotics, coding, various Google applications, and other projects with infused technology. And as we embark in the spring, you'll see that a lot more projects typically do arise in the classroom. And the tech integrator spends a lot of time infusing technology into those, into those projects. So more income in that area. At Seward, we're really excited that later on in the agenda, we have drama, drama productions that will commence. So we're really looking forward to that piece. We have the trap shooting team at Minisync. That's a continuation of a program that started last year, and that was all approved in the fall. So we have students that are ready to participate in that program. We have two with the possibility of three. And the amount of scholarships that are awarded in that program are absolutely tremendous. So if you have any interest in that area, I would suggest you look into it and hop on board. At Seward, we also have internships. We have four students that are, that are in ShopRite headquarters that are having internship opportunities. We have over 40 students that are participating this year in community service, which, you know, runs the realm of the school, the community, and the nonprofits. We have 16 seniors working on ISPs, which stands for Individual Student Projects. Some of the examples are fundraising for charities, they mentor middle school students, and they're starting a podcast at Seward, which is amazing. We have some online courses. We have 16 students that are participating in those opportunities in all sorts of selected courses. Some of them are enhancing program, and they are credit-bearing. And we have two programs currently through Toro College. One is the MedAche, that one's for juniors. And we have MedExcel, which is for seniors. And we have three students that are involved in each of those programs for six overall. So that's some tremendous work, part and parcel to Mr. Schiebling. Many of you know who she is, and she does a great job in this area, providing opportunities to our, to our students. And at Golden Hill, we have some amazing things going on as well. Program offered in grades three through five is Spark, as Mrs. Lysak had indicated. And we have about 15 students that are participating in that program. And at the upper elementary level, we have a TRIPS program, which 57, 57, that's a lot of students. Wow. In the gym? So 57 students, that's tremendous. Build It STEM, again, 15 students, American Sign Language, which is another 15, the Art Club, which is the cartooning, right, and painting. And last but certainly not least, a beekeeping program. So another 15 students involved in that. So we thank the board for your help and assistance and your support in providing these opportunities for all of our students at Seward and at Golden Hill. And we wouldn't have these tremendous opportunities if it wasn't for you and her support in that. And also to the administrative teams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kastine. And it's a team effort, everyone in the district collaborating together, sharing ideas, and a lot of hard work that goes on behind the scenes. So thank you all for making these programs and opportunities available for our students. Was there anything else?
Unfinished.
Sharing this good news and what's going on behind the scenes for our students. We're on to Board of Education reports. Mr. Redman, Ms. Gorosos, do you have anything you want to share tonight? Okay, thank you, Ms. Gorosos.
I'm the Orange County School Board Association delegate team. We had an amazing presenter, I believe it was Reverend Wilson, but David Little, he's the executive director from the Rural Schools Association of New York State. And he actually had a great discussion about things that you guys heard about the governor having a large increase of $125 million for the pre-K funding. And has continued to increase that approximately last year. And he talked about the full funding of the foundation game. He talked about trying to modernize the formula, whoa, already, and stuff like that. So it was a great presentation. Please look into it, have a Google, I'll say the Rural Schools Association of New York State, it was amazing. So we wanted the information. And it's had pamphlets, actually, anybody at the end, he had brought some pamphlets. I brought along, if anyone wants them.
That's great. Thank you, Ms. Gorosos. We move on then, there's no unfinished business to discuss this evening, so I want you, new business.
Mr. President.
Yes.
In the interest of time, since it is after nine o'clock.
Yes.
I suggest that we take items one through eight as a number of this motion.
Do we have a second? I have no objection. Do we have a second? Is there any discussion? Items one through eight, you said, Mr. Redman. All right. There's no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motions are approved. Items one through eight, new business. Thank you, Mr. Redman. We're on to item number nine then, resolution approving the athletic merger with Chester. Do we have the motion, please?
Via resolve that the board hereby authorizes a merger in or shadow of certain inter-scholastic athletic programs with Chester Union Free School District to include applicable off-season trainings to commence winter of '23 and throughout the '23-'24 school year pursuant to an agreement among the two districts. And further authorize the interim superintendent of schools to execute said agreement as presented to the board at this meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Number 10, resolution approving athletic shadowing with Warwick.
Who accepts the resolution and submitted in the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Number 11, approval of educational services contracts.
Via resolve that the board hereby authorizes its president to sign the agreements with the Cornwall Central School District regarding extended school year services for students with special needs as presented to the board at this meeting. A copy of said agreements shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
We have a second from Mrs. Gorosos. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Number 12, approval of employee assistance program next gen.
Via resolve that the board hereby authorize the interim superintendent of schools to execute an agreement with Employee Network Incorporated to provide eligible members as defined therein with access to the next-gen employee assistance program, effective January 1st, '23 through December 31st, '27, at a rate of 85 cents per eligible member per month, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second. Stephanie, Mr. Redman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion's approved. We're on to number 13.
I suggest that we take number 13 and 14 together, since they have to do with APR approval.
Mr. Redman, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Resolutions 13 and 14 are approved. We're on to future agenda items, which will include OCS board nominations and the '23-'24 student calendar. And we'll move on to public comments. I believe everyone heard the rule, so I'll skip that for now. We'll go straight to our list. First name for public comment, Stephen Caldwell. Mr. Caldwell, please.
Stephen Caldwell, David Jai. I just wanted to make mention to the board tonight, I appreciate it, Mr. McCormick and Ms. Shaw's well-developed plan, the timeline, the information that's been on the website, it was discussed thoroughly in both sessions. I don't know if I represent the 37 people total twice, hopefully I don't, because I have both the virtual and the in-person. The one thing that I was concerned about is I heard that it was going to be a closed operation from everyone, but the fact that you would be the ones involved. And I only say that, you know, Mr. McCormick did mention, you know, people do feel out of the loop, without sufficient participation in the process, I would say, people would feel more confident if they had a place at the table. I do understand why. They explained why it's a closed search, it's a closed search, because you don't know, if you really want to go through that whole process and you don't really want to lose your position, you're standing in the district that you're in. If we're going to hire somebody that, as Mr. McCormick said, needs to be able to leap tall buildings, and stand inbound, and be all these wonderful things that are up on the screen and more, if not the community at the table, then I would come to suggest to the board that maybe you take some administrators, some teachers. You have some wonderful teachers, some wonderful administrators in this district, some that have been in this district for a number of years, some that have ran into us from other districts. They have a wealth of experience and brand-to-the-table, the three-year-old members that have not gone through this type of process before. I do think they have a lot to offer you. You may have some candidates that come and spin tails and bear boozled you with all kinds of wonderful things, which would be nice to have somebody in the room to, if that makes sense, is that holy water or that kind of stuff. So that's all I can say. I appreciate the time and the attention that you all have to us. Thank you.
My name is Praky Carey, and I'm a sophomore at SS Seward. Given your presentation earlier in relation to the district's actions and plans to help students with insufficient grades, it has come to my attention that you all are eager to help those students who need it. However, I chose to write and deliver this speech tonight to address the current state of the school district's special education department. At every board event meeting I've attended, this board has accepted a suggestion to improve the district's special education program in some way, but the board and special ed department have never have taken any action on this. The students of special needs with whom I go to school each day are not provided all of the opportunities they deserve or an equitable environment in which to achieve their full potential. The indifference and discrimination that the special ed kids face on a daily basis greatly disappoints me, and I know my, I know my fellow students feel the same way. Teachers aren't equipped with the resources they need to provide an adequate education for these trivialized students. Kids have IEPs and 504 plans for a reason. The district needs to step up and follow through with these accepted suggestions and motions. You need to give special ed kids the education that they deserve, that you're legally required to provide. Thank you and have a good night.
What I might suggest is then perhaps a presentation at maybe the next meeting from Mrs. Pavlik, to talk about our efforts and programs with respect to special education for our students.
Wait, like, in time, or is Pavlik with me?
Mrs. Pavlik, who is the head of our. All right, next on our list, your public comment this evening is Nicole Regan. Did I say that right? All right. Regan, Nicole.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Regan, I live at 811 Lane, I have two students in the district. This is particularly for the newest board members who campaigned on transparency. So far, the window into the selection of the new superintendent process has been wide open, but now I hear unfortunately, you are closing the blinds until a decision is made. Two questions come to mind. What opportunity for community stakeholders to have visibility into the candidates will happen going forward? As well as what opportunity for the community stakeholders will they have to provide input for the final decision? It appears as if there is none. So for the group that campaigned on transparency, I think you've really missed an opportunity to, at the very least, get representatives of the groups of the stakeholders of your community, doesn't be wide open. But you missed a chance, I think someone spoke to you earlier, to bring other people other than the board into the decision process to really support that transparency that you also claim to love. Thank you.
All right, next on our list, I believe is Christina again.
All right, thanks for the charge, it's my pleasure. So I know to answer my comments from earlier, that I want to mention how great you guys did on Way to Patient and Summer Appreciation. And I also want to clarify that my comment was not pertaining to the actions of the district as a whole. My comment is pertaining to how we spent our time in the early part of the meeting, and how the board is spending taxpayers' money. That's what I was, what I was going to do too.
So I'll begin then, if that happens. Thank you so much for.
You're on the clock, you're on the clock. You don't get unlimited time.
But you actually called me out, and that was a little bit underhanded. Again, as a Warwick homeowner, my name's Christina Hody. I graduate in May with my master's degree in social work. Regarding your selection process for your new superintendent, it stands to reason a candidate who meets your required characteristics would naturally have the knowledge, experiences, and perspectives of a high-level and research-based academic background. It is therefore extremely likely that any qualified candidate will be acutely aware that children who do not fit into the dominant social identity, race, ethnicity, or culture where they live, or who have different academic abilities and needs, typically experience lower academic, social, and behavioral outcomes. Data shows that when children with those identities don't see themselves reflected in their environment, in the lessons they learn, the books they read, and the adults who teach them, their chances of improved future outcomes improve significantly. That's when they do see those things reflected. I don't know if I was clear. When the kids experience bullying, it's usually because they're different, and other kids don't really understand their identities, what they mean, they don't understand their cultural backgrounds. And that's understandable, because it's part of human nature that we're a social species, right? We're kind of bred to fear difference in our, in our DNA, right? But it's with the informed perspective of research and data that educators and social workers like me understand that we need to overcome those more primal urges that we have to fear difference. And your new superintendent is probably going to be just as informed as your last one was. I want you to all be aware and take Nicole's advice on involving your community.
Please have a seat.
I absolutely will. Thank you, Mr. Anjadi.
You're very welcome. Next, we have on the list Tracy Strong.
Can I say something?
I believe my comments are still going to be rejected.
Okay. We'll move on to the next name on the list, which is Heather Venus, Venus again?
It's still Venus. I'm Heather Venus, and I live in Florida, in Cedar Crest. I have had three children go through the Florida school system, only one graduated. I am the mother of an LGBTQ child. All of my children are people of color. And due to bullying, my children didn't get the support they needed at Seward, had to go elsewhere. I thought with the presence of Mr. Leaven, that things would finally change. Not for my kids, because my kid is sitting home doing nothing, because he wasn't supported. But for future children. And my hope, my hope that things would get better for future children went with Mr. Leven. I'm deeply disturbed by the board that seems bound and determined to destroy our school system. As a taxpayer, I shouldn't be expected to cover this cost, and this is ridiculously expensive, what you're going through, to get a superintendent to replace one who was phenomenal. We had, we had everything that was on that list. We had that already. And now he's gone. All the details, the search, should be made public, and I see your presentation tonight, that wasn't public. But also the expense of what we as taxpayers are paying for to get another superintendent. It's, we had somebody that was great. Now this is time for transparency, which somebody else had mentioned. The transparency that you all talk about, talk about the money, talk about the process, include the community in the process, because these schools are part of our community. My kids have gone to school from kindergarten through 12th grade. kindergarten through 12th grade. Didn't graduate here because you couldn't support them. Two out of three. And the third one is sitting home for the last five years. Thank you.
Next on our list for public comments this evening, we have Lisa King.
Does her cough start now? I've got one in my mouth, haven't I? I have literally no idea what ideals are held by the folks who continue to be dog and ponying into our school for the sole purpose of misreceiving facts and moreover, the ideals and desires of our community. However, I feel comfortable in asserting that the vast majority of community members oppose the sexualization of children and most certainly, certainly any trace of pedophilia in our schools. That said, I present excerpts from Identical by Helen Hopkins, of which two copies have been available since 2017 at SS Seward Library, which accommodates 11-year-olds through 18-year-olds. I love you so much, my little flower. Daddy needs something from my girl. My sweet rose, will you give it to me? I want you to see something, something that proves how much I love you. This is only for you, Kaylee girl, seven years old. He lifted her gently, sat her down on the bed beside him. Then he opened the snaps on the fly of his flannel pajamas and stood up stiff like a stalagmite. See how much daddy loves you? See how much you love me too. Touch it. He closed her hand around it.
Mrs. King, you've made your point. Please continue.
No, I'm reading, literally from the book that has been in the library, from the Radical Moms for Liberty that want to ban books. This is the kind of stuff, right? I can't even read it out loud. They want to talk over me because it's that uncomfortable for them to hear. This is literal pedophilia. This is literal thirteen-year-old children having sexual relations with their teachers in school. This is the stuff that they feel is equitable. It's equitable that we have all of our children exposed to the absolute trash that they want to bring in from Buffalo, New York. No, thank you.
This isn't a debate, please. We'll shut down the meeting if you're unable to remain civil and not talk over each other.
I'm not talking about this. That's completely.
All right.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah.
She's special.
Yeah.
The president.
If you're unable to remain civil and follow the rules, we will shut down the meeting.
But you're not following your own rules.
Please, this isn't a debate, okay? This isn't a debate.
You weren't.
We're on to Mr. John Figley-Gomey. You'll be removed from the meeting if you're unable to follow the rules.
I'm removing myself from the meeting.
Thank you.
You know.
Mr. Figley-Gomey, you had your chance to speak. Give us.
Good evening. So, on a positive perspective, it's exciting to know that Mr. Fogarty out of Golden Hill did start a GoFundMe page. I'm sure there's other avenues to this, what's the money for projects. But he is interested in beekeeping and the acquisition of honeybees and safe environments in order to demonstrate the shelter to kids safely. I do want to register society. I'm supportive of it. I've donated to it. It did come up on a complete page. And I did say that I would make that a public statement on it. And I think that it's very inspirational to have that kind of golden health leadership to a teacher who's very eager. I would also like to say that my daughter, who is in the high school with an IEP, and the meeting that I did attend, was very excellent, I believe, by Ms. Pavlik. And the transformation that she has gone from, from sixth grade to tenth now, and where she's at, and the confidence and success is incredible. And that's it. So have a good night here. Very thankless position. So we all work hard and there's a lot of serious topics. This may not seem so major, but it's possible. And I think both should be commended. And that's it. Thank you.
Well, at the end of public comment, we're on to the post-executive session. Do we have that motion?
Motion to adjourn into executive session at 9:25 p.m. to discuss the performance of particular individuals. Action will not be taken when returning from executive.
Seconded by Mr. Redman. All in favor?
Aye.